Do we have any small local that do, I mean if we, I don't want to just take care of it away.
Right, right.
So if we do a cul-de-sac, because fire trucks are. And if we do the cul-de-sac by.
Yes, we can hear you.
That can't be more than nine hours.
Right. Boy, it was more than that.
It is, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it was more than that. But I guess I would kind of go for any kind of development that we need.
Hey, everyone.
All over, not just. Not just. Go ahead and put in twelve houses.
Do we have anything, when we've got the land, the acreage to do that?
As a city or?
As in our city.
As a city. Oh, yeah, yeah.
We do.
Yeah, oh, yeah, all depends on how. Or depending on, say, up at high school, it'd be perfect.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
That, yeah, that's what I was thinking of, yeah.
And then, of course, all by the pluses.
The town's edge has the wetlands on them.
Yeah.
And I don't know how big it looks, but I know even on the way. And it's going to expand with the rain, because that's where the deal does get there. I don't.
It bothers me.
It bothers me, should bother all of us, but it ain't going away.
No.
You know, as people get more and more mentally cranky, the worse it's going to get.
Exactly. Now, we saw that, well, we saw that in herps. When they don't need this wetland. Wetland has been planted crops in the last twenty-five years, you know.
Like, up to fifty years, we could have water, I mean, it's wet.
Great, great.
Fifty freaking years. I mean, that's insane.
Yeah.
But. Yeah.
One issue at a time, I guess.
Yeah.
But at least having, at least thinking outside the box with this stuff, that's, that's, that's just, we can't do this. Tell me you can't do something, we could do a lot of things from better minds to it.
Well, yeah, I mean, think, thinking outside the box is what I. Like, get normal for that, you know, that's what I wish.
Yep, absolutely.
Because there's not a small town that would love to.
Oh, absolutely.
But they got leaders.
Yeah, right, right.
Mm-hmm. Because of Brandon being on, on video with this, everything will have to be a verbal vote.
Yep.
Okay, you, you already heard.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Five thirty, let's get this meeting started with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion?
Okay, uh, Member Gondik.
Aye.
Mathiowits.
Aye.
Brosh.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Voight.
Aye.
And motion's carried, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I have one question. City of Saint Cloud for thirty thousand for wastewater, is that a one-time pay, or is this, what is that bill?
Yes, so that is the design fees for a future capital project that they're planning for. The actual capital expense will be built into the monthly bills, but since we already had to sign that agreement to commit to Saint Cloud, we have an obligation for that design cost, and since we aren't getting monthly bills yet, we just said to invoice us that amount in whole upfront.
So that's not included in the project we've actually got going now?
No, that, that's something that, when there are future capital projects, then that gets built into our charges that we receive from them ongoing.
And how often is that?
Oh, there's a huge plan, and we can, you know, definitely have a separate meeting, but I mean, they have capital improvement plans for the next, you know, thirty years. Just like we have to do things, they have to do things with the plan.
Any other discussion on this?
Okay, so take a vote, uh, Gondik.
Aye.
Mathiowits.
Aye.
Brosh.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Voight.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda carries, wastewater regionalization project, uh, Jared, hold on.
Evening, Mayor Council, a couple items in your packet this evening relative to the wastewater project, the first item is, uh, change order number two, and this change order adjusts the contract timing. As you recall, last month, we discussed some of the material and supplier availability issues and items of that nature. Um, the change order ultimately memorializes the contract time, uh, modifying the substantial completion date from September of twenty-three to September of twenty-four, and final completion from, uh, November of twenty-three to October of twenty-twenty-four. No, um, costs associated with the change order, rather only, um, contract times associated with that. There's additional supporting documents from a variety of the manufacturers, including the generator systems, uh, electrical providers, and, um, control panel, uh, suppliers enclosed with that change order, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Uh, part of this change order, will that, with the seeding that was done in the fall, and if that seeding doesn't take, will they come back to repair that or to make it right?
Yeah, absolutely, so ultimately, the change order is just modifying the dates. We still have the contractual costs associated with it and all the retainage that is being held, so until all the punch list items of which seeding would be one, um, are complete, that those funds would not be released to the contractor.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for him? I'm assuming I lost my spot here. Uh, can I get a motion to approve payout, or do we got to approve the change order first?
Correct.
Motion to approve change order two.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion further?
Okay, we'll go to a vote, uh, Member Gondik.
Aye.
Mathiowits.
Aye.
Brosh.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Voight.
Aye.
Motion's, uh, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve payout application request number fourteen?
Move, second.
Motion's made and seconded, any other discussion?
To vote, Member Gondik.
Aye.
Mathiowits.
Aye.
Brosh.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Voight.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Council.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, Jared.
Number six, Minnesota Housing Program, Amanda Othout, she is here.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, um, my name is Amanda Othout, I'm the Executive Director at Benton Economic Partnership, um, Sarah, you want?
I'm getting them up, the slides, just give me a second here.
Um, well, I'll just, I wanted to make you aware of a program that's available in our community. Um, it's called the Minnesota City Participation Program. Um, I just want to, I wanted to give you a little bit of background and information on the program, and, um, and then kind of talk to you about maybe next steps on, on, um, how you would participate as a community. Um, so I am actually going to be, uh, doing a presentation quickly on the Minnesota Housing slide. So these are not my slides, but these are Minnesota Housing's slides, so if you have really complicated questions, I might have to bring them back to Minnesota Housing, but I will do my best, okay? Um, so the Minnesota City Participation Program, um, I attended an informational seminar back in October, um, and it was a, a very, uh, great presentation, Sarah, how do I, like, advance slides?
Oh, you'll have to tell me.
Okay.
Yep.
So you can go to the next slide.
Okay.
Um, but it was a really great, uh, informational, uh, seminar to talk a little bit about what Minnesota Housing has to offer, so.
I don't know why it's not moving, it's moving on my screen.
Okay, well, I know you have the information in your packet, and I also have it on my.
I apologize for that.
Nope, that's okay. Do you have to scroll down or something?
Well, I can try it later, it's like it's stuck in there now.
Okay, well, um, I'll just kind of give you a little bit, basically, the Minnesota City Participation Program is a, um, uh, uses, it uses tax-exempt housing, uh, housing pool allocation authorized by the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget to enable communities throughout the state to efficiently provide first-time homebuyer loans in their communities without, um, the administrative burden of running their own bond program locally. So this first-time homebuyer access, um, uh, this first-time homebuyers program accesses, um, a pool of funds um, through their local lenders and which they have access to down payment assistance and closing cost assistance if necessary. So basically, in a nutshell, it's a very low administrative, um, burden, it has very low administrative burden for our communities and our county. Minnesota Housing actually, um, uh, is the one that provides th- those funds and, um, and ministers the program on behalf of our community. We, the first-time homebuyer program, uh, we can apply as a city, as a county, um, as a multi-county jurisdiction to this program. And you can turn to the next slide. Um, these are currently the counties that are participating, all the ones that are in color are the ones that are participating in the program, the ones in white are not as of, um, October. So you can see, kind of, you know, trying to get the information out there is, um, is what's happening right now, they're, they're trying to push that information out there.
So do the colors have any meaning, or just so that we?
There is, the colors are the ones, the areas, um, whether they're a multi-county jurisdiction that has applied for the program, or if they're individual counties applying for the program, but they're, the colors mean that those are the counties that are participating or the communities that are participating in the program.
As a block?
Um, individually, some are blocks, some are in individual, individual counties that are participating.
Some are blocks.
But you can kind of see where that's kind of spread out, so they're, they're trying to make aware, awareness of the program itself, so that's where I'm here trying to, um, bring this information in front of you. So basically, those bonds that are being issued to, to the communities, um, ma- basically, those self-issuance of those bonds may not be economically feasible for some communities, given the economies of scale, so some smaller communities may not have the administration um, or administrative, uh, staff to administer a program of this size and magnitude in our community. But under this program, through Minnesota Housing, um, they can sell the bonds on behalf of the local governments to assist them in meeting their, their local housing goals. And it's allowable by Minnesota State statute. So those hous- that housing pool allows Minnesota Housing to access additional bonding authority through an application process administered by Minnesota Housing from January second to January fifteenth annually. So we need to apply for the program within that window in order to be, um, considered into this housing pool. And, um, historically, Minnesota Housing has competed for thirty-one percent of the available housing pool um, with other self issuers such as Dakota, Dakota County CDA, Southeast, Multi-County HRA, Washington County, and the City of Saint Cloud. Um, so basically, the, the benefits of the program is to promote first-time homebuyer, um, homeownership within our community. It allows us to access down payment assistance and closing cost loans, um, for homeowners that are interested in buying homes in our community. Um, as I mentioned, it's very minimal administrative burden, um, there's reporting, I think, twice a year, um, that's something that BEP can help with, of course. Um, but other than that, you receive monthly reports on the activity, uh, in our community. So there's actually dedicated funding through this program for our community. Um, they provide all the marketing, all the outreach, they, there's no deposit, um, or a fee to apply for the program. It's really, um, you know, allowing the city to have access to these pools of funds, which we haven't had before. Um, and then, again, they provide a report on the loan activity for the area every month. Switch to the next slide. So again, these housing loans, so that direct appropriation for our community would allow, um, first-time homebuyers to purchase, um, a new property, um, it allows them to have down payment and closing cost assistance, um, through loans. These are not grants, these are loans, they are payable, um, at the, depending on the program that the homeowner chooses, um, or that they qualify for, uh, they either pay that down payment assistance back at the end of the loan or throughout the course of the loan, so it's not a grant, it's a loan.
There's that, uh, interest rate?
Um, the interest rate is dependent on the market, um, but it's, the loan, that loan, that down payment assistance matches the lender's rate. Mm-hmm. So, um, this cannot, this can also qualify for repeat homebuyers, so if you haven't purchased a home in the last three years, you can take advantage of, um, the step-up program, or you can use the funds, um, to fix up a, a home. Um, so there's a, a number of different programs available through Minnesota Housing um, that, uh, home, a potential homeowner would have access to through these, through this bonding pool. You can turn to the next slide. All right. So basically, how it works, um.
It's a pyramid scheme.
Yeah. Um, so basically, how it works is, um, a potential homeowner would go to a lender, uh, apply for a mortgage um, for a property that they're interested in, um, they would apply for a first, um, some sort of first mortgage profit, prod, um, product. So either a step-up or a startup loan, um, through a lender. And then, um, Minnesota Housing offers, um, down payment and closing cost assistance as part of the overall package. So, and that can be up to eighteen thousand dollars. You can go ahead and turn to the next slide. So again, this is kind of the process, how it lays it out, so the borrower essentially meets with a lender, a participating lender for this program, um, such as a US Bank, for example, um, they're a participating lender, um, they would apply for the, the step-up program or the startup program, and then Minnesota Housing would ad- would administer the first-time home loan, um, for this borrower.
How many lenders are involved in this?
Um, so I just looked that up, actually, because I figured that was going to be one of the questions. Um, there are sixty-one lenders that participate in this program within a twenty-five mile, um, radius of the city. Of Foley.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep, so you can take, turn to the next slide. Um, so this is where you would find a lender, um, there are several, as I mentioned, there's sixty-one different lenders across, um, a twenty-five mile radius. Switch to the next slide. Um, there are income guidelines with this program, so it's not essentially available to everyone, but there are generous income guidelines. Um, and there's also housing price limits, so because we're in greater, uh, the greater Minnesota, there is a limit on the home price of four hundred and seventy-two thousand in greater Minnesota, so you can't purchase anything greater than four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, um, in greater Minnesota through this program. There are credit requirements, you have to have a minimum credit score of six hundred and forty, there's maximum debt-to-income ratios, um, and down payment and closing cost loan eligibility, so if you are eligible to receive down payment assistance, um, that's just part of the overall program, but there is an eligibility criteria for that. And then, the, um, prospective homeowner has to go through homebuyer education through the program. Um, but it, it's, uh, it's a great tool, you can go ahead and. So this kind of gives you, um, through the startup program, this is just one of the programs, this is their income limits. So household size between one and two, um, we are in all other counties. So the income limits for this particular product is a hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred, and then, um, a household size of three plus, um, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred. So if you fit into those income guidelines, you could potentially qualify for this program, provided you meet all the other criteria.
No, it says one or two people up their household size, do they have to be married, they can be?
It's a household, um, I don't know that it necessarily dictates that it has, they have to be married.
Two people.
Just two people within that household that are applying to this one. And switch to the next slide. So, um, basically, the, the startup program is that the property has to be located within applicant's jurisdiction, so within, um, the city of Foley, for example, uh, the income has to be at or below eighty percent of the area median income, which we just talked about, so those are just kind of some of the guidelines, and you can keep on going to the next slide. Um, the application process, um, so if the city wanted to participate in this program, I'm just going to go back a couple steps. So when I talked to Minnesota Housing, um, Greg Krenz is the one that manages this overall program, and I asked him specifically, um, you know, because we were considering u- utilizing this for the entire county, not just for the cities, cities can apply, but counties can also apply for this program. Um, when I asked him what our, the Benton County allocation was, um, if we were eligible to apply for last year, and he said, um, it was roughly around seven hundred thousand dollars for the entire county, again, that's bonding money, um, for loans. Um, that's not the down payment assistance, the down payment assistance is separate, but it's through the same, um, bonding pool. But, um, you know, considering that the county is eligible for seven hundred thousand, each individual city is also eligible for a separate allocation, he didn't give me, um, he wasn't able to reach back to me about what our specific allocation was for the city, um, but it is based on population, um, and community, the community population within the city. So we won't really know what that allocation is until, um, the period between January second and the fifteenth, if the city was interested in applying. And again, this is access to first-time homebuyer bonding money, um, to create loans for first-time homebuyers or even repeat homebuyers, um, some down payment assistance, it's really a hands-off program. Um, again, no application fee, um, for it, and they haven't done application fees, I guess, for the last five years. Um, and when I did ask him what that application fee would be, it's, um, twenty dollars for every hundred thousand dollars that is allocated to a community, so it's very minimal. Um, and the minimum allocation is a hundred thousand dollars per community that applies. So, I mean, it's, it's a really great program, um, there's the ability to have access to these funds for our first-time homebuyers. We know housing is a huge issue in all of our communities, um, even across the state, so this program is just, it just makes sense to participate in it. And I think, so, so when we talk about the application process, this would be the city's application process, so you would have to apply for Min- to Minnesota Housing, um, it's a three-page, uh, application, um, or, I'm sorry, a three-page resolution, a one-page application, very minimal. Um, the agreement needs to be sent to Minnesota Housing between January second and January twelfth. Um, they have very specific rules, and I'm not sure exactly why, but that you can't submit the application before or after that period of time, that's the application window. Um, and then, the Minnesota Housing then allocates all those resources to the participants that want to participate in this MCPP program. It takes the item to their board, um, and then we receive an applic- uh, we receive an email with the allocation amount for our community. Um, and then, as a participate, a participant in the program, we have access, um, to outreach templates, marketing materials, um, we can reach out to all of our local lenders, um, eh, to inform them of this program so that when they have a potential applicant come in to apply for, you know, um, a mortgage, they can, um, at least provide this information to that applicant, right? So it, it's a really great program, I thought it was a really great tool, as we're continuing to talk about housing, um, to be allocated some of this bonding money for our community so that our first-time homebuyers, um, and even repeat homebuyers can have access to these, this program is, um, phenomenal, so. Um, maybe, do you want to, I can't remember if there's a couple more slides, yes. Um, you could, I kind of went over that, that's the allocation amount, and I also have a spreadsheet in there. Um, all right, so talking about the allocation amount, um, again, minimum allocation for each community is a hundred thousand dollars. Again, I gave you an example of what Benton County, as the county, would receive last year was seven hundred thousand if we were to apply. Um, we have to use at least fifty percent of that allocation between January sixteenth and November thirtieth. Um, if we're worried about, you know, using half of that allocation, which I wouldn't necessarily be, um, we can talk to Greg at Minnesota Housing and, and readjust that allocation. But the best part about this program is if you go over your allocation, that, um, that bonding money, uh, can be reallocated from other communities that don't use it to our community. So for example, if we were allocated a hundred thousand dollars and we went over our allocation by two hundred thousand dollars or five hundred thousand dollars or even a million dollars, um, that money would be reallocated from other communities that didn't use it. So, um, there's a lot of opportunity here, um, the one thing about this program is that it has to be approved um, by resolution every January, if you want to continue to participate in the program. Switch to the next slide. These are some of the marketing materials that are available, um, for, you know, a community to use. And again, that's a very low administrative burden, we don't have to create the marketing materials ourselves, Minnesota Housing does that for us. Um, here is a spreadsheet of, I know it's like really hard to read, um, I'll just give you an example.
Yeah.
What was that?
Yeah, that's even smaller.
Oh, that's, oh, is it smaller, I'm sorry, I forget, you know, some of us can't really see very well, um. No. I. I'll give you an example, um, so Sartell, uh, participates in this program, and they were allocated, um, in twenty-twenty-three, they were allocated three hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. They have five committed loans, and their committed amount was one point one million dollars. So they very much exceeded their allocation amount, um, by just having, you know, by just five loans. Um, down payment assistance that they received was forty-eight thousand four hundred. Down payment assistance that they received was forty-eight thousand, four hundred. Um, so that's what some of those applicants received in down payment assistance over the five committed loans. Sherburne County, uh, they participate in the program. So it's county, city, multi-jurisdictional communities. Sherburne County, if I can read this right, one point six, um, just over one point six million dollars that was their allocation amount in 2023, and they committed ten point three million dollars. So they definitely met their goal.
How about one of the smaller areas, like Rice? I can read that Rice is on there.
Rice and I, yeah, I, Rice is on there. It's one point one million.
Could be Rice County.
Yeah, I think it's Rice County, because that doesn't, doesn't make sense. Yeah, Rice County, um, one point one million dollars that they were allocated. Four point seven is what they committed, and twenty-three loans.
Here's, Sandstone is close to what Malaca would be.
Yep, Sandstone, um, a hundred thousand dollars. Remember, that's the minimum allocation amount. And they com- uh, did two loans, and their committed amount was a hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Let's just look. St. Cloud, one point two, just over one point two million dollars. That is what they were allocated. They had ninety-five committed loans, and their committed amount was sixteen point seven million dollars. It's a really great program. I, you know, I'm, um, I'm certainly going to, um, inform all of our other communities about it. Certainly the county, uh, I think the county might have some interest in participating in it as well just because it's, um, very low administrative burden on all of us. You get reports, um, you really are helping, um, our community with, you know, purchasing new homes. And, you know, some of those first time homebuyer, uh, down payment assistance programs through the, the startup or, um, the startup and step-up programs, you can receive up to eighteen thousand dollars in down payment and closing cost assistance. So I mean, that's a substantial amount, especially, you know, now in, in these days and ages. You know, a lot of people aren't able to afford, um, to put a down payment on a home, right? So, I, you know, it's just something to consider. I guess, um, if you want to keep on moving through the slides, this is just a close-up on some of the other programs and what their allocations were. So this is just kind of pro- some program tips on how to market the program. Uh, we would certainly do some outreach with all of our lenders in the county. We, we would also have, um, some flyers, some marketing information available for those that are interested, um, in this program. And then you can move to the next slide, Sarah. And Minnesota Housing is, um, the entity that runs the program, that administers. So that is it. So again, these are state bonding, this is state bonding money, um, that has been directly allocated for housing. Communities that want to participate in this program, it's a short application process. You have to, uh, submit the application and the approved resolution in the, in that window, that January second to that January twelfth timeline. And then Minnesota Housing basically manages and administers everything. The lenders are the ones that, that, uh, are, the participating lenders, if you will, are the ones that actually work with Minnesota Housing for this, these funds. So, uh, it's, it's a really great tool, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Brandon, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Anyone else have any questions? Do we have to make any action on this, or is this just informative?
Well, if you would like to participate, we have to prepare information for January.
Yep.
Prepare resolution and...
Yep, I already have the, a, a draft resolution ready for you, um, and I also have the application ready for you. So if you're interested in participating in the program, I could put it on your January agenda.
Oh, I'm definitely interested in it. I think we need to take advantage of it.
Are we gonna have enough turnaround time? Because we're not gonna meet till the eighth.
Oh, I think we'll make it work. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
If that's what the direction is.
Worst, worst scenario, if you don't use it, you lose it, right?
Essentially, but you know, uh, again, that allocation amount that you get is the bonding money, right? It's not like the down payment assistance, it's the bonding money. So it's, it's those loans. So if you, if you make one, if, you know, one loan with a hundred thousand dollar allocation, you met, you met the goals, right? So, um, you can obviously spend more, you know, we can ob- obviously use more than that, but at that minimum allocation amount, I think it's worth at least applying for. We would have to do one loan.
I'm in fear.
Bring it forward in January.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yep.
Winter sewer rate ordinance.
Get it there.
Basically, Mr. Mayor and Council is, um, we already did the public hearing. This has been posted on the website. So, um, the council just needs to make final action if that's what they wish to do.
Looking for a motion to approve ordinance number four seven five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this?
This will be up to review every year. If need, if we need to make adjustments, we'll have to make adjustments.
Yeah, every year, the council has the right to re- address rates, correct?
Yep.
Anything else?
No further discussion, roll call.
Gondek?
Yay.
Mathiowits?
Yeah.
Brosh?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Voit?
Aye.
Motion's carried. This time we'll have open forum. If anyone here would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. No one? Department reports, city attorney, not here. Police department, Katie McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first I'll start off with, you received the stat report for the month of November. We had three hundred and seventy-six calls for the month. Um, some things to point out, child ICRs were up, um, had the whole month of school. And also winter parking tickets were up. Reminder, there is no parking on C Streets from two AM to six AM. Uh, suspicious activity in our medicals, um, they stayed about the same. We have, coming up, cocoa with the cop is December fourteenth. At the Foley Elementary Media Center is for ages, um, preschoolers to third grade. Um, I talked with the staff there, and we have for sure eight people signed up, but usually the next few weeks here is when we get the high amount of people registering for that. So just reminder to the public that, that they can sign on to Community Ed and register for that event, and it's free of charge for the kids. We have fun activities, uh, kindness lesson plan, and then they get cocoa, so.
What was the time on that?
It is four to five, or sorry, not that one. That one's right after school, three to four. And then squad car, um, we are just maintaining regular maintenance issues right now, knock on wood, so. The last item I have for you, with Vikstrom departing sooner than what he originally stated, that leaves us, um, for me coming to you tonight and requesting, we start Officer Pausch next Monday to help with our scheduling issues that we've had. We originally were going to have him promoted to full-time December twenty-sixth, but I'm looking for a motion and approval for him to start full-time starting December eleventh.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this? If not, roll call.
Gondek?
Aye.
Mathiowits?
Aye.
Brosh?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Voit?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That is all I have for you unless you have something for me.
How is our third squad working out?
The spare squad, when we use it, it's good. I mean, it's always reliable. We had to get a new battery in it, which, the minor maintenance, but it's always, so, so far, it's been working great for us.
Good.
No other applicants for the part-time?
No, we have not received any.
Excellent article in the Benton County News between Hans and Katie. It got the point crossed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you. City engineer, Jared Griffith.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, tonight I don't have any action items for you, just a couple of updates. First being the chunk nine twenty-three project. Uh, I spoke with the state today. They don't anticipate any, any, uh, action on site until the spring. I think I mentioned at the last council meeting that that, that completion date was extended to, I think, June fifteenth of next summer. And the second item then would be, uh, the scores for the IUP, what are the water improvements. We recently had a staff meeting, um, and at that meeting we discussed those scores and, uh, potential next steps. Essentially, from that meeting, we, we talked about moving forward some preliminary engineering exercises to, you know, dive deeper into the, um, funding needs for those improvements. Um, and so my, my intent is to come in either, I think, the next council meeting with the, with, um, some options for you, so. With that, I, I'll take any questions you may have, but that's kind of all I have for tonight.
So everything that's been put in the ground now is our responsibility, or the state's if something gets hit out there as far as signage?
Twenty-three project?
Yeah.
Well, as far as signage, you mean like the...
Do they maintain it?
Signs or, or the...
Do we maintain it, or any, any, or any and a, any and all above? Let's just start with that.
I believe, well, I know the push buttons are state's responsibility in maintenance. Um, I'll have to double check on the actual streets, like, speed limit signs on our cooperative agreement with MINDOT, but I, I don't believe so, but Mark likes to go.
Signs are there, street lights are ours.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
I don't want to get into a arguing match here later when stuff starts getting hit.
Right. Your, go ahead. Like I said, that's all I got tonight, so unless there's any questions for me.
Anyone else? Thank you. Public Works and Fire, Mark Papapous.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I don't have a lot for you tonight. With the nice weather, we've been keeping the guys out as much as we can. Uh, they're trimming trees now, kind of like the county is. Just odds and ends outside along with truck maintenance on days like today, and we ran a full round of, on the trails just to, uh, did. With that, I got the paint sprayer in there, um, in your packet tonight. Our paint sprayer of twenty-three years passed away at the end of the year this year. And, and we had the price in there, what, two thousand? Adam was pretty sure it was twenty-one hundred for parts, and then we had to take it to Paintmaster to fix it or whatever, so it's... If you figure that at forty-five hundred, we paid twenty-three years, that's less than two hundred a year, so I think we got a good run out of it. So we'd like to, we have that money left over from, uh, V Plower Mine. If we could buy this line laser from Diamond Vogel, eighty-three twenty.
Do you have a second quote?
No.
Do we need a second quote? Anyone have any questions on this?
Do you have any i- idea how many gallons of paint you ran through that?
A lot.
A lot. A lot. We do use it, actually, we started, oh God, all of fifteen, if not, probably, but we're pushing twenty years. Maybe when we got it, we started, we painted the pool with it too.
Okay.
I mean, it's cut down on the time there to...
Yep.
A morning instead of a day, so.
So we need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion. Wait, wait, wait.
You're okay, that's fine.
Motion's made and seconded to approve.
Thirty-nine hundred.
No, it's more than thirty-nine hundred.
Eight thousand, three hundred twenty.
Yeah.
It's a thirty-nine hundred model.
Oh, yeah. Eighty-three twenty for a new paint sprayer. Motion's been seconded. Roll call.
Gondek? Gondek? Mathiowits?
Aye.
Brosh?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Voit?
Aye.
Do you have anything else for Public Works, Mayor or Council? Couple of fire things. I don't know. Just on the fireside, we've been working, we've come to you this summer about the tanker committee. We're getting close on our specs. Um, we sent it out to the membership yesterday. I think we're gonna have a hopefully good discussion on it tomorrow night. So, uh, go over it. What I'm hoping is, dates are moving back further and further. We're already into late twenty-twenty-five with an order now. So, uh, January, February to come with you with this. We had said three hundred to fifty-four, three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand. We are, uh, hoping to, we had one change with the lighting. I think we're still gonna be able to stay at the four hundred thousand mark, so. Kind of within the, what we had, uh, stepped out to do, so. That's more of an info thing. We'll give you the specs. It's not as long as an engine, but it's eighteen pages of fund rating. That Santa parade is two weeks from now, right, December twentieth? We'll do that around town again. I know Candy Cane's got donated for the kids, so evening, six o'clock that night. Uh, like I say, we'll do the Santa parade.
Did you get the new squad from New York?
Yeah, it's here, squad, it's here, it's up getting, uh, the lights, New York lights, fastlights and, and that move, whatever, trying, you know, they're redoing, programming some of them. And, uh, you know, the new thing now is you slow them down a little bit when you're on scene or whatever, which we normally shut ours off in the yards, but... So it's there, we're, and we got to redo some of the striping on the door, which we knew that. And I haven't got a price on that. I emailed her today and she says, yeah, I'll get you a quote. It's just basically the striping in the door decal, similar to the pickups we have now. Nothing exorbitant.
Did we sell, sell the other one?
Well, we can't till we get this one back.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we're chomping to do this, because we'd like to switch over while we have time too, before we get into Christmas time and everyone's busy. So, I'm hoping sometime in December. Unless you have something for either one or the other two or departments?
I guess my question is, Mark, with these trucks getting bigger, uh, are they gonna fit in the hall for the future?
They still do, yes.
Okay.
And like, can we spec our rescue? We spec it at a, this one has eleven-six height requirement. A tender won't, a tanker will not be that tall. But when we did our rescue, we had to spec it. They had to put a low-pro heating unit on top of it. So, yeah. I mean, I could see the day coming. I don't want to see the day, you know, where you have to put a bigger door on the front of it, but we'll probably just keep specking with the twelve-bowl height limit or eleven-six.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Administration, Sarah Brunn.
First thing, Mr. Mayor, Council, um, if you are okay with it, I'd like to schedule my review, um, for just prior to the first meeting in January, so like five o'clock. We'll plan on that unless I hear differently, if somebody has a scheduling conflict. But, um, uh, we'll just do that quick before the meeting starts. And then, uh, the second main item I wanted to make sure I brought up is, um, I compiled, uh, working with the staff, um, some information on sewer rates, kind of some history of the project, um, what it means to adopt the winter use rate. The intent of this is really just, um, some talking points or communications. Wanted to make sure you all had a chance to read through it, were comfortable with it. If, if there are no concerns, um, we just were, we would like to use some of that information as we communicate to the public. Lot of questions. We have a lot of new people in town too that maybe weren't here when we were doing the facility plan. So I think it's important, um, that we, uh, focus some energy on educating, um, the community on, on where we've been and where we're going and why. So any questions, concerns, comments?
I think it's written up very well, very explicitly.
I think it would really help.
Okay.
I said anything, everything was... I said, I think everything was written, put together well.
Okay.
Very explanatory and should answer a lot of questions people have been asking.
Okay. And also, I encourage you to, to take that information too as well. You can certainly share that with the public as you need, you know, whatever you find helpful. But, yeah, we'll probably focus on some communications then in the next coming weeks to just help maybe get that out there and just help people kind of understand where, what's all going on and why, so.
So do we still, once we hook up to St. Cloud, do we still have to have a wastewater permit?
You have what is called, it's not a, it's not a five-year, like, we have limits permit. It's just a, what is it called?
Collection system?
Collection system, I think, just because we hold. But not the regular five-year.
So how long is our, what year are we in now of our wastewater?
Well, we just renewed it before we started the project. It renewed like in January, February, and then we let the, we bid in March, so, a couple of years.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? That's all you got, Sarah?
I think, we're working on elections and getting that stuff going. I'll have some judges for you. We have a first election coming in March. Other than that, we're really just, you know, trying to get things done in the office and getting ready for year end. I mean, it's coming quick. If you have any questions, you know, reach out, let me know.
Thank you. Any old business? Any new business? Alright, at six eighteen, I'll recess the regular city council meeting to conduct the truth and taxation hearing related to the 2024 budget and tax levy. Do we have to go over anything with that before we...
No, if anybody does want to, we do have the summary information on the back, which shows the fund balances and then what the levy is. I'll see if I can pull it up here, because I just wanted to make sure we could get that out. So there are copies if anyone is interested. What we have presented is what went out to public hearing, which are the notices that you received from the county and it is a nine percent increase. I'm getting there. Didn't hold my spot. So, resolution. You know, I'm going to go this way. Here we go. So it's a total levy of one point four million, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then, here is your summary, nine point four-two percent levy increase. So this sheet is provided in the back for anybody who's interested.
Alright, with that, is there anyone present here who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? No one. We will reconvene the regular city council meeting at six twenty-one. Is there a motion adopting Resolution 2023-18 approving 2024 tax levy?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Gondick?
Aye.
Mathiowits?
Aye.
Brosch?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Voight?
Aye.
Motion carried. Anyone wanting to speak at open forum for the second time? I'd like to thank the Boy Scouts for coming tonight. Thank you. And if not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's being seconded. Roll call again?
Gondick?
Aye.
Mathiowits?
Aye.
Brosch?
Yes.
Swanson?
Aye.
Voight?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.